What is this? Well, I'm good. Oh, we're here. My apologies. Battery guy in the house.
Okay, looks like maybe we're all here now. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Considering it's now 5:34, we'll call this meeting of the Columbia Urban Renewal Agency Board to order. Roll call, please. Paula.
Diana Bailey.
Present.
Scott Baker.
Present.
Stacy Coburn.
Present.
John Frederick.
Present.
Gary Grossman.
Present.
Steve Kramer. No response.
We'll be in.
I'm sorry?
I just spoke with Steve. He's coming in soon.
Yeah, he's gonna join us.
Linda Miller.
Here.
And Tim McLaughlin.
Yes, present.
And Darcy, I did hear you. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, next up is the approval of the agenda. It's been submitted to you. Would accept any discussion on changes or an approval, motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
This is Darcy Long-Curtis, and I would like to make a motion to move action, or sorry, discussion item eight B, the Mill Creek Gateway Grant Opportunity, up to action item seven B, and that would make the extension of the TD Fitness Hub ENA seven A.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion. This is Stacy Coburn.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by thumbs up.
Miller, aye.
Are any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so the motion carries. So that will be item seven B rather than a discussion item. Any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to approve this as amended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by thumbs up.
Miller, aye.
McLaughlin, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 21st meeting. Those who've been sent to you, we would entertain any motions to change or amend the minutes or a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is Darcy, and I would like to just point out a Scribner's error. Just a little something on page four. Or, yeah, sorry, for the packet. Right above the discussion about the Mill Creek Greenway. In the information about the motion passed, it's actually eight to one, not eight to zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any other additions or corrections? I'm communicating with Commissioner Kramer, who's having trouble joining the meeting. Okay, with no other changes, I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as corrected.
I'll move to approve the minutes as corrected.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
McLaughlin, second.
Okay, ten seconds. All those in favor signify by thumbs up.
Miller, aye.
Excuse me, Scott, when you use the thumbs up, it's not recorded on the video. You have to be in, thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Kramer might be having the same problem that I had, which, as I was stuck in the waiting room, waiting for somebody to let me in.
Yeah.
The mouse was dead, and no one was letting in.
How fun.
Well, he'll just have to storm the door, I guess. There he is. There's Commissioner Kramer. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have members of the public that would like to make comment?
Deborah Liddell, yes, I would. Thank you.
Yes, Deborah. Name and full name and address, please, Deborah.
Okay, Deborah Liddell, BO Box 1329, the Dells, Oregon. 97058. I'd like to say that we are prepared to conclude the DBA agreement and are ready to receive the deed to the Granada Theater. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Deborah. As I think there's been a little bit of confusion that's caused this not to move forward. I would ask Alice Cannon to be in touch with Deborah and Chuck and initiate getting the paperwork done for the transfer of the Granada deed.
Thank you very much.
Chair will take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the public that wishes to speak? Seeing we're here and then we'll move on.
Actually, sorry, I didn't hit the button fast enough, apparently. This is Dan Richardson, a member of the public. Actually, I have a question.
Address, please, Dan.
Yes, 3515 Crest Court in the Dells. I emailed a letter of comment to you a few days ago, asking you to send it along to the other board members. I guess if you have done that, or if you've seen that, if that's been entered in, or...
Dan, two things. One, yes, that letter has been forwarded to the agency.
Okay.
Public comment, we do not address anything that's on the agenda, and the Greenway project is on the agenda further down.
Very good. Thank you. I misunderstood because it was a discussion and not an action item. I thank you for your correction.
No, and I found my email confirming to you that I'd confirmed that I'd sent it on to staff to send on to the agency. Didn't leave my email box this weekend, so my apologies for that. Do we have any other discussion from the public? If not, we'll move on to the presentation on the First Street Riverfront Connection Project, KPFF Consulting Engineers. It's the primary project that's in front of us this year. And I think it's important for us to catch up on where we stand in the project and what the economics might be. So with that, I'll turn it over to either Alice, if she has comments, or to Peter Craig from KPFF.
Chair, I just want to introduce our presenter this evening is Peter Craig from KPFF. He may have another comrade with him from Greenworks participating in the presentation, and so thank you for being present tonight and for the presentation. So go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Peter Craig. I'm a project manager and civil engineer at KPFF. I have had the joy of working on this project since it started in 2008, so I've been in all phases of its development. We've got Wes Shoger from Greenworks here. Wes, you want to introduce yourself or wave or something?
I have that quite a long of a history, but yeah, I've been working on this project since it got rebooted. So, yeah, I don't know if I need to introduce who I work for. I work for Greenworks and Anscapate Architects, and we were as well, working on the project with Peter and KPFF way back when as well.
So we have, Wes and I have a short presentation for you here, and then would be happy to talk through any questions that you have after, after we make it through that. So I will attempt to share my screen. That's that one. All right. Is everyone seeing this okay? So, so the, what we have here is, we basically have three slides. The first one is about project history, just a little background for anyone that is curious or unfamiliar with, with the progression of the project. And then I have a slide about the current design, and then Wes will wrap it up, talking a bit about the street furnishings and what you can expect from materials as the project goes through construction. This project is part of a much larger vision that started in 2008. The original intent here was a combination of urban renewal and access to the waterfront. It included a project to build the commercial dock that is in operation now. And then included a connection to the tunnel under 84, revitalization of First Street, so that it was more of a, more of an urban streetscape, less of the backside of downtown. And the key feature of this early design was a tunnel under the railroad and first to a sunken plaza on Washington Street. So there, there was a lot of really interesting design done in this component. As we worked through the design, the Lewis and Clark Festival Park came into being as first a trail through the vacant lot, and then a thought about what could that be? And Greenworks and Nathan Good Architects came up with this concept that is now the park. You can see there was a lot of other conceptual work done, particularly around the tunnel and the plaza. That is, we'll see as we go to the next slide, that's no longer a component of the project. This actually made it all the way through 95% design and permitting with the railroad before the vision for this area changed. The remaining piece is this idea of a revitalized streetscape along First. So I'll flip to the next slide here, and I'm happy to go back to any of these when we get to the end, if folks have questions. So what I have up right now, we just are, we're in the process of going through the 75% review, so we've completed a 75% level design. The city, the city finished their review. ODOT is working through a similar review at the moment. This design at the top of the screen is the signing and striping plan, which is kind of the best view of the overall project. The project will basically, if I was going to oversimplify all of this, we were essentially removing parking on the north side of the street in order to allow better bike movements. We're adding curb extensions, which is what we call these bump outs into the side streets, which shorten the pedestrian crossings while still allowing parking on the side streets. And really, the, the intent here is to create a design that's very similar to Second Street, but with some revamped street furnishings that Wes will talk about in a moment. With the understanding that Second Street is 20 or 25 years old at this time. Worth noting here is the idea of improving bike and pedestrian movement, both to the riverfront and just through the downtown area in general. One key aspect of the original project was that we would have this protected crossing in a tunnel for pedestrians coming up, say, folks coming off cruise ship or coming from the waterfront. That's still a goal of the project, so we're, we're working through the design and need to do more coordination with the railroad as we progress to figure out how to make this existing at-grade crossing of the railroad safer for pedestrians. We also, on the bike component, these, these cross-sections offer two ideas of how, how the street can function. What we've proposed in the current design, like I said, is removing parking on the north side of the street, keeping a lane of parking on the south side, using that north side for a westbound bike lane, and then having mixed traffic between cars and bikes in the eastbound direction. So this gives you the, the opportunity to have two-way bike traffic on First, getting those people out of, off of Second Street, onto a quieter street, a little more protected, gives them a buffer. And then in the future, there's an option that really with a striping-only improvement, you could create a two-way protected bikeway if, if that was something that was attractive to the city as, as pieces developed along First. I will flip over to this next slide now. Give it to you, Wes.
Okay, yeah, so I'm just continuing on with where we left off. We're keeping a lot of the similar items, site furnishings that we had from the previous phase, with a few exceptions. I guess I'm going to go through each, each option, and these are kind of just showing you the intent of it. It's not exactly the exact model that we're using, but starting with the tree gray. Hopefully, as you're familiar, you have that three-by-three standard tree gray. It's got this kind of radial pattern, cast iron. So we're kind of continuing with that design, except we went with a little bit bigger tree gray. We've been told that a lot of the street trees are not doing too well, and they end up having to be replaced, so we advocated for a little bit larger size. And here's your quote-unquote city standard three-by-three, which is pretty small, especially for such an arid climate. So anyways, we're proposing a four-by-six tree gray, same effective design that you have currently. And then, can I just pan around here, or?
Sure.
Sorry, I've got a dog barking in the background, and it's distracting.
Yeah, how about you just talked about the piece you'd like to discuss next, and I'll panel.
Okay, let's, let's just go left to right.
Okay.
So, going with the unit papers, this is a little bit of a deviation from your standard. I don't, you have that kind of, I don't even know what shade you would call it. It's a very non-traditional shape you have downtown that was done in the early 2000s, I think, where your, your streetscape got revamped. And for this project, we're just proposing like a typical kind of quote-unquote brick style, you know, it's rectangle. It's not actual clay brick, but it's, it's a concrete paper. It'd be similar tone, you know, we're thinking of a light gray color range. And then for ballards, there's this section of street that kind of interfaces with the parking lot. We're going to need some separation from the vehicles and pedestrians. And there's some existing ballards that have been used underneath the crossing, I believe, on, on Union Street, and then we're proposing to use the same, the same ballard. Then, we have two types of fence, guardrail conditions. I, I say, I break it down between a fence and a guardrail, because one's preventing people from falling down a gap from the vacant lots. And another condition is a fence condition at the ODOT right-of-way, the rail right-of-way, where it's a six-foot height condition. The one where it's a guardrail condition, it's more like four feet tall fence, but this is the existing fence that exists at the park right now, and it's the same, same model. Trash receptacle, we're, I'm unfamiliar with the standard that is used or the model. The information couldn't get tracked to us, so we're proposing to use either the same, the same model, or if you're looking for kind of a revamp. You know, it's a good opportunity to maybe refresh that style, and there's plenty available, but the option on the right was something that we're considering. And then bike racks, the previous project that we did had a bit of a, I guess, a deviation, and it's not really a typical style that we, that we see. So this one, proposing going back a little bit simpler and going to kind of the staple style, and I noticed reading some news stories, but there was some sort of bike rack program that occurred downtown, and it has like the same shape, and we're hoping just to kind of copy that without the, the infill pattern for the bike rack. And then the street tree, it's not really a site furnishing, but it's going to be a main kind of staple for the First Street. And it's not a common one that you've, I've seen in downtown Dells. I see a lot of maples, and it seems like they're not doing as well as they could. Elms do a lot better in the dry climate of the Dells, and we're proposing that for this project as well. That's about all I got.
That kind of summarizes where we are. We're happy to talk through any, any questions that you all may have about the project.
Most frequently said line in 2020, you're muted. Do we have any comments, questions from the agency members? Well, this is a primary, primary project for us. Certainly, costs of completion can shift a little bit, just because we have had so much time before we're in the, the process of moving forward with this. So at any rate, thank you for the presentation. And we look forward And we look forward to progressing. With the. Project, it's been a long time coming.
Yeah, absolutely, we appreciate the opportunity to work through it with you all and to talk about it today.
Chair.
Thank you.
Chair, I just wanted to say that. One of, among the many things I'm getting up to speed on is the new interim community development director and urban renewal manager is this project. And I did have a meeting jointly with Steve when he. Prior to his departure in retirement and was able to get a little bit up to speed on it, but I will need to be doing some more coordination within the next couple of weeks. With ODOT, just to get this project on track. So I'll be, you'll hear more from me as I learn more.
Thank you, Alice, I think that's, as you guys know, Alice is. Very recent on the job, she's working very hard to catch up with. Things that have been before the agency or maybe coming up. I think one of the benefits of the COVID period. Or the COVID and smoke period is that it does slow us down some and give us some opportunity. To review, reset, and build some new foundations with Alice's help, but she does need. A little time to catch up with the complexities of things that we're dealing with. But with that, we'll move into our first action item. Consideration of the E and A extension with the Dallas Fitness Hub. LL's redevelopment of the Tony's Building. At four oh one to four oh seven East Second Street. Alice, do you have any particular background other than there are two. Extension periods available in the E and A, and we've had a request for us to extend. This negotiating agreement with the developer.
Chair, my understanding is that this request has been before us for a little while, but there was a cancellation of a meeting this summer. Something, say that again, yeah, yes, yes, so. So what we're recommending is that the, the agency authorized the extension of the exclusive negotiating agreement with. The TV Fitness Hub for the purchase and redevelopment of the property located at. Four oh one, four oh seven East Second Avenue. And have that date be effective August ninth. And the extension would be for hundred twenty days, so that would be an extension to mid-December. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Time clocks tick some, but the developers have had time to review the project and. Come back to us under the negotiating agreement. Any questions? Yes, Darcy.
Yes, Mr. Chair, my question is, based on staff working with them. Does it look like they're going to be able to come back with something, because one of our. Main concerns when they discovered all of these significant expensive. Problems was that we were going to need to go back out with a new RFP in order to make it fair to everyone else. So I'm wondering. Are they working towards something that's reasonable that we could accept, or is it going to be asking so much of us that we really need to send it out for the R. A new RFP to make everybody eligible?
Well, I don't think there's been any staff discussion, I can defer that to Alice, but I'm not aware of any staff discussion. To. That gives us any further information that the fact that they've come to us. They understand that we did not accept their offer. As discussed. And that their intention is to come back with something that would be more attractive. Alice, do you have any further. Background on this?
I have nothing to add, there is no new information that Steve offered on this. So I will be digging into this project as well and learning.
Oh, thank you, time is of the essence on this in a sense for them, because this backdates to August eighth. So some of the time is already burned, so I presume that they're working. Diligently towards getting us something well before the extension runs out.
Good, as long as the rest of the. Board doesn't have a problem having this, you know, come do again in the first part of December, when it's. A little bit hard to go out for anything, that's fine with me, I just bring this up because in the past, we've always expected other people to justify why they wanted an extension. In order to, for us to consider that, and so I'm just raising that point.
That may, that may have been discussed with Steve, but we don't have Steve to give us that information, so if he didn't leave that behind in some evidence. I don't know what the full discussion would have been with them, other than they made this request right at the. Beginning of it, but I'm sure Alice will be in touch with them to introduce herself and. Be able to maybe carry on some of that discussion.
Responsible for paying for the maintenance through this winter, then if, if we haven't resolved this with them, correct?
Correct, and then we would still be moving into a DDA, and then from the DDA on to. Changing title of the building, so I think we're into that on a regardless basis at this time would be my guess.
Thank you.
It only seems, it only seems fair, this is Councilor McGlaughlin, only seems fair with the conditions outside with smoke and with. The COVID, that it seems reasonable to go ahead and approve this, in my opinion.
Yep. So do we have any?
Chair Grossman?
Yes.
Here, is there any reason that we can't bring that effective date up to current date? And get us all back on track with all of the COVID and. And the fire issues that we've been dealing with, just a question as we move forward, thank you, sir.
Yeah, let's defer that to our attorney, Jonathan, would you see an issue? With making it a hundred-and-twenty-day extension from tonight's decision?
Thank you, Chair Grossman, good to be here, well, I wasn't consulted with this matter, it's before my time, but picking up the ball where Steve left off. My understanding was we had a. An E and A that expired, and it expired on some date, I think it was August ninth, is that correct?
It looks like effective August ninth, two, twenty.
Right, so the whole point of tonight's action item is to consider an extension of that E and A. We would have to backdate it to the day of the initial expiration, which was August ninth, so. As far as the hundred and twenty days are concerned, if that's, if that's the main area of contention, I think that was worked out with staff. If staff would recommend to increase that time limit, there's nothing from a legal standpoint that would prevent that. However, it should be backdated to the date of the initial expiry of the original agreement, and it should not be backdated from tonight. That makes sense?
Chair, I support that idea, following Jonathan, here are our attorneys' advice, which is to back it to August ninth. But if you want to push it out to a hundred.
Well, we do have a, another renewal period, one would hope we could resolve this before that would need to take place, but we do have another renewal period. That if current conditions were to prevent. Us being able to complete the negotiation, we could extend it further, so I think it's covered.
Thank you, Chair Grossman, I, I will concur with that, because if you have the other extension, then we have options, so thank you very much, sir.
You betcha, thank you, Steve. Okay, if we have.
Pardon?
Gary, John Frederick?
Yes, John.
What are we doing to ensure this building over the winter isn't going to deteriorate any more than it is?
That would be a question for Public Works, and I don't think we have anybody with us tonight from Public Works, and I doubt Alice has background on that right now.
Dave Anderson, Dave Anderson is here.
Dave, can you address the maintenance on the building for John?
Yes, good evening, and thank you, Chair. So historically, any of the work associated with the urban renewal buildings has actually been done by the maintenance staff that's. Al, the general fund, the workout at City Hall, but I can tell you that probably the thing they would be looking at is. Keeping the heat on the, in the building so that there's no freezing of, of water lines. If a building has a sprinkler system, you know, the, the fire marshals indicated that we can't just turn those systems off without posting. A fire watch on them, so I, I would anticipate that if the building retained, remained in the city or urban renewal ownership over the winter, that. They would have some periodic checking going on, that the heat systems would be maintained and the water systems would remain active for fire sprinkler systems.
Okay, thanks, Dave, John?
What about roof issues, foundation issues? I understand that from one of the, that there was some water issues in one of the areas, the roof is. That been taken care of or being looked at to make sure that we don't end up with another recreation building?
I'm sorry, I don't have any information on that, so I haven't ever seen the condition reports or. You know, reports indicating immediate maintenance needs, so I'm not quite equipped to answer that question for you tonight, but we can certainly. Follow up with you on that after I have a conversation with Julie and find out what the. Plan from the, from the maintenance staff would be for those types of issues.
Good, Dave, if you would do that, because I think John's got a point, there is a, was a pretty serious section of that roof that could have almost looked like the same problem as the rec building. So that certainly needs checked on, do we have any other questions concerning this action item? If not, I would entertain a motion to extend the E and A to the Dallas Fitness Club in accordance with the DDA. And second.
Chair Grossman Kramer here, I will, I'll move for the extension.
And I'll second.
It's been moved, and John Frederick seconds to extend the E and A, all those in favor signify by thumbs up.
We get this.
Miller, aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Moving on to item B, the Mill Creek Gate Greenway Grand Opportunity. I believe Scotty has a presentation concerning this, and so. Alice, if you have any introductory comments, if not, we'll turn it over to Scott for the presentation.
Chair, I think Scott Baker is in the best position to present this.
Perfect, Scott, it's yours.
Well, presentation might be a little bit of an overstatement, but I'll give a little bit of background. Some time ago, Oregon started collecting a fifteen-dollar per new bicycle fee. And didn't really know what to do with it, and they've been collecting this into a pot of money that is now grown to twenty-two million dollars. They've assigned, ODOT's assigned a staff to create a grant program to disperse these funds. It's brand new, they're figuring it out as they go, they keep changing the, the deadlines. But I think that this is something that's actually going to work in our benefit, because. The work that we have, the urban renewal has done over the years, purchasing property along the Mill Creek Greenway. And then funding engineering and design and cost estimating work for this project makes it very shovel-ready. This is a great opportunity that requires. A ten-point-seven percent match, so basically eleven cents on the dollar. We've completed that Mill Creek Greenway engineering and cost estimating, it's about two-point-five million dollars. Prior to any value engineering. If we have, hire someone to project manage it, it will bring that project cost close to three million dollars. So we have an opportunity to get this segment of Second Street to Sixth Street of the Mill Creek Greenway complete. It's the segment you, you saw video of, we had a presentation at our last board meeting. Get that segment built with only about three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars of local money. Downsides are, is the application is coming up very quickly, this wasn't really part of our work plan. We didn't really know that this was coming, but. On the other hand, no other agency out there knew it was coming either, so I think that it's going to be the agencies that are able to be nimble enough to have a shovel-ready project. As far along as we are, that are able to pounce on this opportunity are the ones that are going to get funded. This grant is, will only be available on a three-year cycle, so if we don't. Strike while the iron's hot, we will have another chance, it will be three years down the road, and every other agency will also have had three years to get in line for it. So I think it will be much more competitive farther down the road than it is today. I did attend a webinar on the grant application, there is another webinar on Friday, September eighteenth. If anybody's willing to, or wanting to attend, I can give you the link information in the chat, just let me know. But um, this project, the Mill Creek Greenway, has been on the urban renewal list since the urban renewal was formed in nineteen ninety. And. It's nobody's first choice to have something sprung like this on an agency, however. What an opportunity, and to build a durable piece of infrastructure that would really make, would really increase the quality of life for the people in the Dallas. What we're asking for tonight is that. Staff, especially planning staff who's brand new on the job, clearly doesn't have the, the time or availability to get the letter of intent in. By the deadline, which is October thirty-first. What I'm looking for is, is that I would be willing with help from Bruce Lumper. Dan Richardson, who's also on the line, has offered to help, with the help of those folks coordinating with the city. I'd be willing to take on at least doing the letter of intent that is due by October thirty-first. I think that we can put that letter in. Buy, put our hat, throw our hat in the ring, if we decided a later meeting that this is not a good fit, or for some reason that we don't want to do it, we can always choose to not apply. But it's a considerable amount of work to prepare this application, and I really. Although we have a meeting on October twentieth, and it's due the thirty-first, I don't think it's reasonable that I could get it done in eleven days. So what I'm looking for is at least board consensus that this is something that we want to pursue. That will give me the comfort that I'm not waste spinning my wheels, building an application that we're not going to fund, and. Again, happy to answer any questions, I don't have any slides prepared, but. I know Dan also sent out a letter that you all got to read that explained it very succinctly, so. I'll go from there. Oh, and I, I do want, I, I will. Throw this back to. Mrs. Alice Cannon, and she can talk a little bit about whether or not the funding is available in our budget to fund this project. And another thing that I would say, a little caveat is, is that. Our application will be stronger if we have funding from multiple sources. So I would encourage this board to consider funding up to the full amount. And then saying that we are going to strive to get partner agencies to also contribute, this is an agenda item on our Park District Board meeting tomorrow night. If the board tonight decides to fund this project up to the full amount. Then the Park District will decide what level of funding would be appropriate, even if it's ten thousand dollars from parks, ten thousand dollars from city parks. Ten thousand dollars from other agencies, collectively, it will show a broad community support for this project that I think would increase its chances of being successful.
Okay, discussion on part of the agency.
Chair Grossman?
Yes.
I'm in favor of giving the green light, I'm also in favor of pouncing, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for our community.
Others?
Yeah, Chair Grossman, I think that the history precludes us, we have donated. Significant amount of money to the, to this project, and I think that at this point that. I'm surprised that Mr. Baker doesn't have the application in front of us tonight, anyway. Anyway, with that said, I am in full favor of moving forward with this. Thank you.
Diane? Diana, excuse me.
Scott, how much of the $22 million is up for this grant or did they even imply how much they would support?
Yeah, the, great question. They are looking, so two types of projects are eligible, planning projects and construction projects. It was very, very clear from the webinar that they have a strong preference for construction projects. They really want to build something. And it's, the amount is from 250 to $4 million per project. So we're kind of right there in the sweet spot.
The other question I had is, is there restrictions about community support? Could nonprofits or Main Street participate in the funding as well? Or is it only other agencies or governmental support?
Okay, yeah, so there are restrictions on who can be the applicant, but there are not restrictions on who can contribute to the funding. They, there is one restriction. We can't use federal money to match federal money. We can use state money to fact match. So, so there's a restriction. This is, we would be going after the federal portion of the funding, so we could not match with other federal dollars.
But you could match with nonprofits or community, okay?
Absolutely.
Let me address the fact that I had given a no vote to moving this to an action item tonight. I am in full support of funding this opportunity. So it has nothing to do with the project itself. However, today I've become aware that we currently don't have somebody that's taking full responsibility for the administration of the grant. And I don't see us moving forward until we resolve where the responsibility lies. We could initiate a letter of intent to be brought before the agency next month so that there is no question that the work is not for naught. But I believe there's got to be somebody that kind of steps up and says, it's inside of our current scope. And I'm understanding, but Scott, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's not really parks and rec and there's some concerns now currently inside of the city. So I'd have a concern about our normal process of, let's chase the car and decide what to do with it when we catch it, as opposed to being really prepared and taking orderly steps so that we don't step on ourselves again as we have in the past.
Thank you, Chair.
End of speech.
Thank you, Chair Grossman, and that, that segues into my last comment of last meeting about the governance of this organization. So I would like to formally ask that we put that on an agenda moving forward, that we discuss the governance of this current agency. Thank you very much, sir.
Steve, as soon as our interim community development director can get caught up with stuff, we'll certainly address that because that's going to be a first position question as to whether it makes any sense for us to spend time dealing with projects if we're going to hand this back to the city. Scott?
Mr. Kramer, as part of that discussion, would you be willing to add on to just the, just how we staff the urban renewal agency? Right now, we're contributing to 10% of our new interim director's time. That's not very much. And I have a concern, especially hearing that this first street project's been on since 2008. I believe that's a direct reflection of not having a dedicated urban renewal manager. The agency has had some in the past. I'd like to maybe consider having that as, as part of our future so that we can have the bandwidth to complete projects that are on our list and, and really get a win for, for our citizens here.
Okay.
Steve, would you be okay with that being a joint?
We have a discussion at hand on the Mill Creek Greenway, please.
So, Chair Grossman, and I think that, that I'll respect that, that we need to move forward with these conversations. I, but we need to get that on the agenda. So thank you, sir.
Darcy?
Yeah, so my question was, could we instruct, make a motion to instruct staff to move forward with the letter of intent? However, wait to vote on the final approval of our participation until the next meeting.
With, with Scott's agreement, I would feel a little more comfortable moving forward with Scott doing the letter of intent portion, just because he's familiar with the grant. He can certainly consult with Alice in terms of getting that in front of us because I absolutely agree the project needs to be done. But let's cross Ts and dot Is. Scott, how would you feel about drafting the letter of intent?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that and I volunteer to do that. I think that from, I don't need a formal motion for funding tonight if it will be on the agenda for the 20th. I can, I can do the work and submit it. And I'm one that likes to turn those things in, you know, when the grant cycle opens, they get read first, you get the calls from the grant coordinator first. So I, I, we will have a little bit of lost opportunity by not submitting it on October 2nd. However, the form is not even available yet. I think they're still building it. I guess what I would like to hear in absence of a formal motion is I would like to hear from any board member who has reservations about this project. If no board member has reservations, then, then I'm willing to commit the time to do the work in absence of a formal motion. But I'd like to open it up. Is there any board member now who has reservations about funding this project?
You got to my question before I could ask it. So anybody not see this going forward?
I, I think it's a good, good idea, good project. My concern is with the state of the economy with the COVID-19 and all that's going on in the world right now. Who knows what we're going to get in taxes, property taxes and sales tax and everything if this, if this shutdown continues much longer.
That's definitely, but we have the funds fortunately. You know, we've got this thing called opportunity-driven funds. And so I agree with Scott that, I mean, none of us would want this to dump on us as quick as it did. But it is an opportunity and we got to move. And fortunately, in this particular frame, we have the money to be able to do it.
This is, this is Counselor McLaughlin. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. Green light, this one. This is great. Go ahead, Scott, in my opinion.
Yes, Diane?
Absolutely, Chair Grossman. This is, this has been in the works for a long time. A lot of, a lot of folks, a lot of community members have put a lot of effort into this and there's no reason for us not to move forward with this.
We need something good moving forward. So Diana, you had comments?
Yeah, I just want to tag on to some of the comments there from Tim is that although we're faced with COVID right now, this actually will provide the Dallas with more outdoor space and a safer space to deal with COVID. And encourages activity, it encourages being outdoors where it's safer. So, yeah, I think it's actually moving towards a positive light with the COVID situation.
Yeah, good point. Well, with that, Scott, I think you've got like unanimous consensus on, let's get the train a-moving.
I didn't hear from Darcy.
Slow it up at the point of kind of figuring out where responsibilities lie. But I think we can get an idea of that by the time we get into our next meeting, how we're going to divide up responsibilities to make sure this gets done.
Yeah, Chair, one of the considerations we have, and Dave can chime in on this as well, is just that we do not currently have the staff capacity to manage this project to port application. So agreeing to do, to participate on the letter of intent and agreeing to do the, agreeing to some funding is absolutely doable at this time. Beyond that, we have to have some more conversations. And I had talked to Scott about that earlier today. We don't have the bandwidth at this time in-house to do it. And if we, you know, we'll just keep that conversation going and I'll be ready to talk some more about that at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll figure it out and to Scott's earlier point and the aspect of how we get this managed, maybe it's a matter of hiring somebody that managed, manages the project. I don't know, I'm not the one to make that indecision. But like I said, we can have those discussions between now and getting the letter of intent signed off and out. So is that satisfactory with everybody? Any more discussion or move on? Tim?
Just thank you for stepping forward with your leadership, Scott Baker. Thank you. That's all.
Yep. Well, this is a great and great found, great found money. With that, we would conclude our, well, we have urban renewal plan projects still in discussion. I'll defer to Alice, but this is kind of one of those areas that requires her, I think, to have more time for background.
Chair, thank you. A parting gift that Steve Harris left us was the spreadsheet where he outlined, and you found it in your packet, outlined the status of projects, urban renewal projects. He and I didn't have a lot of time to walk through that before he moved on. I also compared it with some good work that I've seen in the budget document that you adopted in June that shows the projects that have been completed and gives a very good picture in just a couple of pages as to what has been accomplished in, by this agency. So I think his attempt was to try to get, to further the conversation that maybe board members, Kramer was talking about earlier is what, what is this agency want to be doing? What are its priorities and so forth? And I am ready to, in a, in a month or two, ready to work with you on that. Initially, what I can see is that we're at a point where this, this agency has been active for about 30 years and it looks like this might be a good time to do kind of a pulse check, financial analysis. Where have we been? How much have we spent? How much indebtedness is left in the agency? How much runway, if we're thinking about this as an airport runway? How much runway do we have left in the agency to accomplish? And then what do we want to accomplish prior to ending the agency? Prior to accepting, collecting all the revenue that we can collect and, and bonding all the debt that we can, that we are allowed to bond. So with that in mind, I would, I'm not asking for action tonight, it's too early for that. But one of the things I'm thinking about is asking you next month or the month after to have us move forward with the financial analysis, which could then be a, once that's completed, we have data that could help us springboard into goal setting for the group and have you talk about where you want to go in the next coming years as the, as the agency kind of winds down or winds up if there is some, some wish to extend its life.
Well, I think that's also the time to have the discussions that Commissioner Kramer and Scott Baker both referred to, that that's the time that we really need to be reviewing those sorts of things because if there's a major change there, then there's a major change in the whole game plan. So basically, I think Alice is looking for a little bit of time under her belt before we get into a pointed discussion about this. And she's, I had some experience with this process and might be a good one to do. But it's on our agenda as a discussion item and so it's certainly open for any comments from the agency board members.
I certainly like hearing those words and the direction that was presented. So kudos. Nice getting to know you in, in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. Some of you may know, I actually knew Alice when she was a part-time fill-in church secretary in Albany about 30 years ago. So Alice and her family and I go a long ways back. John Frederick?
Amen, Alice. Thank you.
Nicely done.
Nicely done.
Any other comments or input? Scott?
Yeah, so welcome. We didn't really build a room into the agenda for that and I, I think that was a miss on our part. So we're thrilled to have you joining us here in the Dallas for as long as we get to have you. And, and appreciate, I certainly appreciated our conversations over the, the last few days and today. And I shared that with you. I think when the, as you, you dive and sink your teeth into a financial analysis and of really the efficacy of this agency, one of the things I would ask and have been asking since I've joined the board is that we have so far measured our success on our contributions to projects. You know, about $19 million that we've contributed to projects. But I'm not sure that's a great measure of our efficacy because it doesn't include all of the contributions from our, our funding agencies. And doesn't, we, we've never been told, over the 30 years, what have the agencies actually spent on urban renewal? It's a much higher number than 19 million because there are several years that we don't get any projects done and don't contribute to any projects. And so I think that it would be important for this board to have that reference point because I know that for our little agency, contributing 8% of our budget every year to urban renewal makes sense when we have a reasonable expectation of a return on that investment. At some point, this tax increment needs to infreeze so that we can realize that benefit. When we weigh too heavily on projects that don't end up with a reassessment of property values, we never get an opportunity to see a return on investment. And I think that I would like to see our financial health shown in those terms. Which of these projects that we have done have triggered a reassessment? Which are solely infrastructure programs, which are a little bit more nebulous? And I know that's a lot to put your arms around, but I think that you're up for the task. And so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Chair and Board, I intend to hire some professionals to help with this. This is something, and I, and I know that you had Elaine Howard, who was a urban renewal consultant who visited with you in February, I believe. She has done a similar project for a city I used to work for along with another, another sub consultant. So I'm going to reach out to her and just ask for her advice and maybe ask to replicate that scope of work. I'll take a look at it and see if it meets, matches the needs here in the Dallas.
Other discussion on the part of the agency? Well, seeing and hearing none, I think that's very good direction from Scott. I think the more angles we can look at what's worked in the agency and what has not worked in the agency is really of value because there's not all that much institutional history on the agency board now. So I think a variety of ways to look at things is extremely important. So with that, we're to staff comments. Does staff have any more comments?
I have one more comment. You may wonder, what does interim community development director mean? And just so that I can answer that question, I've made a four to six month commitment to Julie to be here. I think at this point, she's saying she may change her mind tomorrow. But at this point, she's saying she'd like me to stay longer than that. And so we'll just see if I, I do live in the Portland area and I, and so I need to consider getting through a winter and see how that goes. I do have some experience working in the, I worked in the winter of 2019 in Hood River for a couple of months. So I drove the Gorge during that period. And yeah, just, and I am spending a few nights a week in the Dallas. So, and so that's, that's been very pleasant for me and I'm enjoying, enjoying my time so far. And I really like the staff. So thank you Paula and the rest of the team. It's been great.
Even with the smoke?
Yes, that's, it's better than, than home. I live in Damascus, Oregon, and it's hot weather there, yeah.
And she's right on the edge of the fire issues, so. Well, thank you, Alice. Welcome aboard. My fault for not doing any good welcome. Thank you for calling me on that, Scott. The problem was I've met with Alice already, and like I said, part of it was old home week. And I hope you guys all will take a little bit of time to either catch up with her on the phone or stop by as you're comfortable and have further discussion, opportunity to catch up and get to know one another. If we have no other board comments, I have determined that there is no need for an executive session tonight. So we will adjourn without going to executive session. So this is kind of the open time for any last comments. Seeing none, one thanks, Scott, for background and bringing us the Greenway Opportunity. Welcome, Alice. Congratulations to Deborah Lydell and Chuck Gomez as we will move forward on getting the title to the Grenada in their hands and some opportunity for us to see some good things happen in the community. Appreciated the discussion tonight, and we will be back together again on October the 20th, so.
Chair Grossman, may I make a final comment? Your leadership, your leadership is exceptional, and thank you for helping facilitate a project to fruition. So I appreciate your efforts there, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. You guys are a wonderful group to work with. So you guys all have a good night. I'm moving on down the hill to my next meeting. So have a good evening. Alice, live carefully. Meeting adjourned.